No, I know Amy.
Okay, everybody, we're gonna, I'm gonna start recording just to make sure I learned how to record.
So Omar is still at work, it looks like, but I guess he's gonna try to get here.
Okay. It's 5 o'clock. The Finance Committee meeting has come to order. We're meeting hybrid remotely because we are allowed to do so by the Governor's Declaration. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of June 13th, which we did receive from Tom as amended. Can you make a motion to approve?
Uh, submit.
Connie?
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of June 13th. All in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Connie?
Aye.
Danris says aye. The mayor's not here. I'm gonna allow people that are here from the public to speak to the items as we go through them. First thing is the request from CitySpace, from the CPA Committee, for financing Old Town Hall's project Phase 2, which is the entire construction project for 3.25 million. As I am the Chair of the CPA as well, I'm gonna go through a few things that we all talked about at the meeting and that I presented in the cover letter to the SIPFul Council. And then I'm gonna allow President Maxi, that sounds good, President Maxi, to speak to the project. I just wanted to let the committee know that all votes for anything we had to do with this project were CPA Committee unanimous votes. The initial $3 million we committed to, I think around five years ago, was unanimous vote. We set aside $250,000 in every budget for five years, including this year. That was unanimous vote. We voted to release $255,000 for the Phase 1 project. That was unanimous. The vote to increase, because of inflationary costs this year, to 3.5 million for the project was-
I'm sorry, Dan. Dan, just real quick, are you recording this?
Yes. Why?
Okay, just wanna make sure, sorry.
Well, there's a little-
I just wanna make sure.
Okay, cool.
Okay, good. Thanks for the reminder.
Okay.
3.5 million was also. And the vote to ask the Council to approve the financing, which includes a $2 million bond, was unanimous from the CPA. The financing, which you'll see in the actual motion that came from the Bond Council, includes $2 million to be authorized by the City Council to bond out of CPA funds. The financing of that would be paid for with what we look at as a sample from the Treasurer was an equal principal bond. And the one we looked at was 5%, which the Treasurer thought was high. I put that in the packet for everybody. That started with a $300,000 payment and went down. That matches the $250,000 we've been setting aside. So instead of setting aside money, we pay for the bond every year. And since there's a good track record of us paying for that, CPA Committee was comfortable with that payment moving forward for 10 years. And we think it might be lower. The Treasurer is still confident that the interest rates, she won't commit, but we're hoping it goes down. Anyway, the $300,000 is in the range of what we wanted to spend. And just to be clear, the CPA Committee's funds are very good right now. We have over $2 million in available funds. So that is why we decided to only bond $2 million. The CitySpace had requested an extra $500,000. We paid $255,000 for Phase 1 out of our reserved account. And we're asking for $255,000 more. It's $255,000 to be transferred into the reserve account from various historic funds because we have the cash, rather than take out a bond for 2.25 million. The CPA felt, why spend money on interest when we didn't have to? We have the extra funds now. And that's because, as you recall, our revenue was up hugely this year, 37% increase in revenue over last year. That's why the budget was, looked like it's 37%. So CPA, although they didn't pass it yet, CPA Coalition is confident that the $20 million that's set aside for the CPA will be approved by the legislature eventually, so we're even gonna get a higher match. Now, just to be clear, these funds, the funding and the payment for this has to come out of the tax, local tax, local taxation. But that taxation is pretty high right now because of assessments. So the $300,000 is there. The other money, the match, fluctuates, so the law doesn't allow us to bond except out of those funds.
Can I just make sure that I understood that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
So CPA comes from two places, local taxation and the matching funds from the state.
Right.
This money, to pay this bond, has to come from the local taxation part of it. And so we can't use the matching state funds towards the payment of the bond.
Technically, and I don't know how the accounting works for that, but the reason for that, if God forbid, the city residents vote to eliminate the CPA, we still have to pay for this bond. And it has to come out of taxation, because we no longer get a match if we're not a member of the CPA. That's never gonna happen, right? What else did I want to say? CPA funds are not at risk. The CitySpace is well aware that they must get all of their funding in place before construction can begin. And although the bond will be authorized by the City Council, it's not gonna be purchased until we're ready to start construction. And that could be in the spring, whenever that is. There's no restriction on when that can be, correct, Jessa and Frank?
Right.
And that's where the hope is, that interest rates will go down. Because we're not gonna buy it now, where rates are pretty high. What this does by this, one of the primary reasons for asking for this now, correct me if I'm wrong, Burns, is that as CPA monies often leverage other project grants, grants from the state, like the Park Grant, CPA funds leverage that. There is the hope that this commitment of dollars by the City Council, this commitment that we're bonding now, the money is now in place, the whole 3.5 million, will act to spur those grant people on, to know that, yes, the city's committed to this project, there's no question about it. So it's hoped that it will send a signal to everybody. What makes, is that fair?
Also, we are planning, we have a timeline for this project. And provided that all the puzzle pieces come into place, we will be in line to move forward with the bonding, hopefully with the city, for the project, as well as the other funding that'll come into place. So we just wanna make sure we have all of our ducks in order, so that when we're ready to go to construction, we will be ready to use them.
It takes about a month for the bond to be purchased and cash in place. And in the meantime, as Mike Tausnick indicated, cash can come from the cash that's available while the bond is going through the process. So it's not gonna delay the project, the purchase of the bond. Am I correct?
Any ideas that the construction would start when?
So the thought would be that the construction would begin in the, in July. So RFPs essentially would- Well, it'll probably be a couple months for the RFPs, in March. May I introduce Mike Tausnick, who is a manager of the project. He's managed our Phase 1 project and is our Treasurer currently, so. So he has a good idea of the RFP process. It's taken us a little time with the current RFP process. And we think that it'll be in alignment with that process. So the RFPs will be established next March and April.
Yeah, so it's a Chapter 149 bid, it's public construction. So it's not actually an RFP, but it's a bid document. So the bids, depending upon when all the funds are available, the bids would then go out. It takes six to eight weeks for that bidding process. So I can't give you a definitive, because all the funds aren't in place yet.
Sure.
We are going for, CitySpace is going for another cost estimate in September. So the cost estimates that we're working off of were 2018. And we've added some inflationary numbers to those cost estimates, but we're not sure that our inflationary numbers are exactly online. Although it looks good, this last project, this Phase 1 project that we just bid, came in just about where we thought it would, given the inflation that we've added. So we think we're close, but we're gonna do another cost estimate, or bring in an estimator, we'll have another cost estimate done. Just to be sure we have, we understand the numbers. And then it's a matter of making sure all the funds are available. So once the City Council approves this, then we know the city's $3,250,000 is secure. And then there are a couple of grants I know that Burns and others are working on that would come into play. We've got about $850,000 in the bank at the moment for that project. And so once we, once we know that we have enough funds to meet our cost estimate, we'll likely then go up the bid. It'll be a public procurement process. We had a meeting earlier today with Mike to make sure that, you know, the city's procurement officer is on board and that, you know, all of the ducks, all of the processes will be followed. But we just did that under Chapter 149 bid for this project, so it's pretty straightforward.
I just wanna go over this quickly, this presentation. And one of the reasons is so that others who might look at this recording can see it. I'm just gonna go through page by, oh, it goes fast. Page by page, if you want me to stop. These are the halls. We encourage all councilors to read this. This is the beautiful-
You can see the, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say it's a beautiful new Blue Room.
Right, you can see the space in use, the venue, the room formerly where Flywheel was. We opened in February and have been booking it, as well as creating programming within the space. I just wanna start off, before we go any further, to say what CitySpace is. We're a nonprofit. We're stewards of the city of building. So we are a volunteer-run organization, and we are building this organization to continue to sustainably manage this building over time. We will eventually not be volunteers, but have staff in place as part of the next project. We implemented programming this year into, that was part of the Blue Room, that we found was expanding our reach to connect with Camden, Hampshire, and Franklin County artists to access the space for free use. And we got funded from the Community Foundation and Massachusetts Cultural Council. We've been planning to restore the second floor space for quite a while. We solidified the documents that you see here in 2018. These are not the final documents, because we made some changes to the back area. As you can see, we increased the size of the green room, made the office smaller from feedback from performing arts groups throughout the region, and opened up that back staircase to the Blue Room, so there could be use on both levels. The main part of the project is to create accessibility, which is the restaurants and that elevator that you see there, which is an external elevator. We did a lot of studies here in looking at, I mean, over time, this building has been looking at the accessibility. It's on the non-residential side, is where the elevator goes into the entryway. This is the first floor. The elevator goes to all floors. When we talk about accessibility, we're talking about everybody can access all spaces of the building as as equitable individuals in the first basement, second floor, and the balcony too, where there will be a tech booth.
Alcany here.
As well as additional seating.
So here's some of the-
Yeah, one of the primary aspects of this project was getting a long-term lease established with the City of East Hampton in 2019, and that made us applicable to historic tax credits, which we have received over $500,000 for the whole B after the project. We have also established funding from individual donors, grants along the way since 2019, when we launched our capital campaign, as well as the CPA committing the original $3 million, which of course has impacted those individual donations for people to come forward and to help match those connections, or match that pledge. CPA designated the account for the project, which was of course incredibly important, so thinking about the other projects within the city and in consideration with this project, and we have scored, come out that the CPA is putting forth towards it. So what we're looking for next, especially now, and then within the next year, we're doing this today, we're preparing the CPA in the city for bonding, funding, and construction. So the project itself, we'll look at the actual budget. Inflation, every year that we wait to do this project, and we, because of COVID, we did have a pause in the campaign. But every year that we wait, inflation costs go up, and of course inflation is extreme right now. So we have 5% to 8% of the construction inflation. I will say good, good words about Mike Tausnick, who is project managing this, and we see with our Phase 1 project that it came, the responses to the project came in nearly close to the bidding cost, or the cost of the project. So that was, you know, we're seeing projects all over the place come in much higher. So we're hopeful, especially since the cost estimate was originally done in 2018, that with our estimated inflation cost there, that the project is approximately 7.475 million. That does not include, when you look at the application to the CPA, that is only for the applicable construction costs. As you'll see, there are soft costs, like an endowment, as well as theatrical equipment and seating, things that can be taken away that the CPA cannot support. So this is our budget as a whole, not the CPA construction project.
I'm just curious, I had a question for the Treasurer, and it may be a Hadel question, and you know, you're still on the call. Because that's what's important to all of us at CPA level, is that we're funding this because it's a historic building. So Jamie targeted things way back that we could pay for. So I'm assuming when a bill comes in that we, that you're paying for it, you'll know how to account for it, so that no one will audit this in the future and say, how come you paid for theatrical lighting when it's supposed to be historic out of CPA? Although I think you could make an argument for that, so.
Well, we already do this with our current projects, right? I mean, we've done some past projects. We've done this, if there's a specific funding that's allocated from a grant, we know that that cost has to come from that grant, that expense.
So is that easy to track? It's easy to track, right? Cost comes in-
I wouldn't say easy, because sometimes, you know, a month's worth of work will improve things that are structurally significant to the building, or historically significant to the building, and some things that may not be. But some of the costs that are identified here, for example, the, you know, the lighting and sound and stuff, that's actually gonna be purchased outside of the construction contract, so we're only going to be, going to the CPA funding for the construction part of the work. The additional stuff, the soft costs, well, some of the soft costs are architectural, and so that will be included. But a lot of the costs that clearly are not part of it, you want actually you can be in the construction project, partly because they're trying to save money.
And I really am not too worried about that. This is historic building, and it's being retrofitted, especially for accessibility, for instance. To me, it's gonna be very hard to challenge, you know, what did you pay for this and that? The soft cost, the soft stuff, that's easy to take out, but and I know there's been a lot of these projects throughout the state. There's one in the eastern part of the state that cost $20 million, and CPA put in seven or something in that city, so I'm not too worried.
If you, you know, if you have a chance to look at the construction budget that Cunardal Architects provided, they lay out, you know, the differentiation of costs, whether it's electrical or plumbing and whatnot. And that is essentially where Jamie and Mike look at pulling out those costs that would be applicable to CPA.
Okay. You wanna talk anything about this page?
Well, that gives you a sense as to, you know, what, how we've divided it up from the point of view of what is eligible for community preservation funding and what costs are ineligible. You see, the majority of the project is an eligible project, so, you know, if you're contributing 3.25 on a $5 million current estimate of eligible cost, it's gonna be fairly easy to justify the city CPA funding going to eligible costs, okay?
This is what has come in already?
Yes, so we have essentially, actually it's closer to 4.8 million at this point for pledged and received gifts. So a number of gifts are over a number of years. We had a modest donor fund initially, with a $500,000 donation. The way that we've looked at funding for this project is really putting together a variety of sources, foundation funding, individual donors, state grants, CPA, of course. So we continue, as well as our business community and corporate reservations. We have current funding that is out, so we actually have over now $3 million in requests for funding from foundations and state funding. We have a Massachusetts Economic Development Bill that is on the Governor's desk. We're likely to see that with the next administration for $750,000 historic tax credits. We have had over $500,000 awarded. We're eligible actually now for more than $750,000 because the, the price of the project is going up based on this inflation cost that was based on our original $6.9 million in the project. That funding actually goes back into the building. So it is after the project is completed, it's essentially the tax credits are sold off, and then we can reinvest.
Operational costs?
We also-
Well, and the facade. You know what the thing is they're gonna be?
We have a million-dollar facade project for the exterior of the building. It's an old piece of the building, so we have to continue to take it.
And this is the timeline?
Yes, so this is the initial timeline with, as you can see, Tom, you were asking about that. You can see a general breakdown of sort of what happens in between now and the construction administration. Some of this will be dependent on funding, obviously. But it will take a couple of months for the, to get the bidding in place. We were thinking it would be towards the end of this year, and it'll likely be at the beginning of next year that we'll be starting that process. We look forward to collaborating with the City of East Hampton on this and with the Project Board. We have had, actually Mike Bowens was a part of our building team to create the initial documents with Cunardal Architects, along with several board members in 2018. So the city has been a part of this process along the way, as well as CPA funding for a variety of projects within the building, whether it's architectural plans or Blue Room.
Okay, so I'd like to first ask if councilors, Councilor Dunham or Councilor Peak have any questions? Then I'll open it up to public if anybody has, anyone may add. Any questions, Tom?
Should be pretty thorough.
We're being asked to authorize bonding for $2 million. And in that motion is also the $1,250,000 as part of the financing. $1 million of that is our, approximately $994,000 is already in place, the $250,000 we've been saving. There'll be a transfer request in this month's packet to take $255,000 out of the other funds available to CPA, and also put it back into that reserved fund. So that would be $1,250,000 waiting to be used once we're ready, in that reserved fund. And that's just a matter of, we have a construction account set up, because that account was set up for Phase 1. So that's easy to do, we just transfer everything in. And that's intra-department transfer, Hadel. In my opinion, and then tell me if I'm wrong, Hadel, since the Council will be approving in this motion the $1,250,000, we just need to do that in-house, the transfer to the construction? Or do you think it needs to go before the City Council again?
It's an intra-department, that's two different transfers. One is for $994,424, that needs to go to City Council. And from Reserve for Historic Resources and CPA Reserve Fund Transfer for $255,576, that also needs to go to City Council, and I think it's going tomorrow.
Yeah, we're gonna put that in for the next week. It's actually next week for the packet. Okay, anything, Connie?
I don't think so. I'm, you know, just to say, I'm excited about this. It's, my partner and I had our wedding reception in what is now the Blue Room. And I feel that it was such an underutilized space for the city, and I actually, the person took me upstairs to show me the the second floor and whatnot, and kind of said that there was a hope of renovating that at some point, and so I just think this is a really great opportunity for the city. And I appreciate the work that everyone has done in kind of recognizing that potential and continuing to, you know, work to develop that and have that as space for the city.
Okay, I thank the City Board enough for volunteering to do this hard work. Takes a lot to get a project like this going.
Takes a long time. We started this in 2004.
Well, let's not have any more pandemics, please. Okay, anybody from the Board that wants to say anything, welcome to.
Hi, Carol Abbey Smith. What is my, I'm VP now?
Vice President.
Of course, still, but yes, yeah, changing soon. I'm also a Realtor and part-owner of Delab Real Estate, and people want to move to East Hampton, I'm telling you. It's crazy. Yeah. It's, and it's young energy. I hear from people, Washington DC, Boston, New York, oh, East Hampton, yes, that's where we want to eventually move. That kind of thing, from my kids that just left New York, they're now in the area. So I think that East Hampton's in a position to really flourish even more than it is now, and this is the centerpiece for the town. To be able to have a 350-seat performance space. And there's nothing comparable in the area that's that size range. But that's a different size range. This is a perfect size. 800 is, there's only gonna be a few shows that sell out for 800. There are some right now.
But when they did sell out?
Yes.
All the restaurants and shops were full of people?
Oh, totally, totally, totally.
Anybody else from CitySpace? I see, whoa, Marsha, go ahead. You're muted, Marsha. Do you have a microphone? I see it's technology. You're still muted. I can see the mic symbol. Can I unmute her?
No, she has to do it.
Well, I have to jump, so I'm also part of the Board. I'm also part of the Board, and, you know, part of the reason I moved to East Hampton was the love of the arts that the city has shown. And I think that the CitySpace and the Old Town Hall is such a central hub, as Carol is mentioning, that it's such an important beacon for the arts in East Hampton. And I've been a proud member of the Board. important beacon for the arts in East Hampton, and I've been a proud member of the board, very new member, but I also just want to thank the city for all of its support. So I have to jump at 5:30, but thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, did you figure out how to unmute your microphone? Well, okay, we know you approve of this project. JP, did you want to say anything? Preaching to the choir?
Sure, so, hi, everybody. I'm obviously very excited about this project. I've been a tenant of Old Town Hall with Big Red Frame for 13 years, maybe even more, and just recently seeing the new energy brought in by the Blue Room with so many different events happening there gives us sort of an idea of what could happen upstairs that are 10 times as big as what we experiencing now in the Blue Room. So very excited about the project and very thankful for the City of East Hampton and for its support.
So Marsha has to go back to Google Meets 101. Anything else from the councilors? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion, and then the motion should be to approve the financing as presented by the bond council to the full council. Financing of the CPA Old Town Hall project, sorry.
So moved.
Connie?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the financing as presented by bond council for the CPA funding of Old Town Hall second-floor project. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Wiss says aye. Next meeting, September 7th.
We'll be there.
You did a good job convincing our other two councilors here. You just have eight more to do.
Love for the job. Thank you.
Six. Okay, six. Okay, thank you. Okay, councilors, we have to move on to the 329. You all know my feelings on this. The city attorney's opinion, I sent it to you, is pretty compelling. This is a mayor central form of government, and the charter is written that way. The city attorney's opinion is that we can't approve 329 without the charter being changed. He feels that would hold up in court. And personally, I feel the process this year, although we had a difficulty with our budget for the first time in 26 years that I've been on the council, I don't think we even fought over the budget with Mayor Tausnick, that I recall, but the fact that the process worked, where the council used its authority to put a hold on the budget and was able to get a compromise, is the way the process is set up in the current charter. If we were to have, to adopt 329, we would need a charter change, in my opinion, and it would have to be voted by the public because it's a major change in the way the government was initially set up. So that's my opinion. I mean, I have opinions on whether we would ever want to do that anyway, but I don't feel that given the city attorney's opinion, that the council should take this up. But we wanted to discuss it, so I'll leave the floor to Tom and Connie. How do you feel about all this? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Yeah, I, you know, having reviewed the city attorney's opinion, I think I generally agree with you. I would maybe break with you in saying that I think that the process this year came real close to being a big mess, and I don't know-
I don't want to see it again, don't get me wrong, but that's what's there.
I think that the charter is what it is at the moment, and I think that it lays out, I mean, I think that one of the things that we've run into a couple times in the past, and I think that we're running into it here, as well as that we have this Home Rule Charter, and so when you look at what other cities have done, a lot of them have adopted just one of the sort of boilerplate charters that the Commonwealth has provided, you know, you're a Plan B city, or a Plan A city, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so you see these things that they work out, and then when you say, "Well, is that applicable here?" Regardless of whether or not you think it's desirable, you say, "Well, is that applicable here?", and you find that because we have this sort of custom charter, it has some language in it that, so like Framingham went through this process with the, with the 329. Framingham has a different charter than us. So, I mean, I don't know if any of the folks who put this forward have other opinions on this, but it seems to me-
I'm surprised Counselor Kozinski isn't here. I did mention that.
Yeah, but it does seem like our language may conflict. It looks like it conflicts with, I'm not a lawyer.
Well, I don't want to set up the city council versus the administration kind of issue which goes to the court of law, you know, we have to defend if we decided to adopt this, the council would have to defend it in court, as I'm sure the mayor would say this is a violation of the charter. I mean, that happened in Springfield, took them a year and a half to resolve it. That's an extreme position, but if we were to adopt it, I could only conclude that the mayor would be very opposed to it, because it changes the authority of the mayor when it comes to budgeting for the school department. Connie, your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, also, I'm not a lawyer. I mean, it looks like it's outlined that we would run into that issue, and so I don't think that it's, I, it seems to me that that would be a huge expense for the city to have to, and the council to try to have to defend that, so to me, it doesn't make sense to pursue that. However, I would be open to changing the charter and exploring that. I think that that's, you know, I appreciate more engagement in terms of what the city council does, more input, engagement from the community, and so I just think that that provides that particular opportunity. And so if people wanted to explore that, then that's something I would be open to, but it seems to me kind of where we are right now, that that's not feasible, and it also, I don't mind conflict, but this just doesn't seem like a conflict that's, it's not going to be resolved by us saying yes to something like that.
The other thing to recognize, and I hope you both do, and I'm sure, Tom, you recognize the fact that this has to be a vote of the people if we were to change the charter, because as you know, the mayor has to concurrently approve any legislative action charter. And the mayor, I don't think any mayor would approve changing a charter which reduces their authority. In any case, I think the legislature would say, "Wait a minute, this is really big, let's put it before the public."
Yeah.
And in my opinion, why not? I mean, it's a major change, so we should do that. So if there were a charter change approved, it would have to get set up to be done by next election? Next local election? What is that?
Or some future election, I mean, you know, whatever, but like, I mean, I have a lot of feelings about the general balance of power in the city that sort of fall outside the scope of this discussion, but I think that, I mean, I brought, unless I can find, I mean, somebody who is a lawyer who says, "Oh, no, that's actually completely wrong, and you totally do have the right to do that, and this is why I sort of struggle to like, I mean, our charter does pretty explicitly lay out the fiscal powers of the mayor beyond those fiscal powers which are assigned to the mayor in the MGL."
Right.
And so that is, I think, the problem that, I mean, for what it's worth, I liked this idea, but I do think you are going to run into that issue.
Well, I have to say, and I'll do it on public, because I won't be here whenever this is adopted, I hate this idea, because part-time city councilors don't have any idea of the operational needs of the city. Boston did it, and they didn't even do, they have full-time city councilors with aides and everything, and they didn't, they have this authority where they, like the state, can adopt their own budget and it's back and forth. I think to take, also, if you just gave it to the school department, you would have departments, all the other departments would be upset that they don't have the same kind of access to the city council. So those are areas that I would argue would be a problem if we were to adopt language in the charter that allows this, but that's for the future, and I may not be around when that happens, so I don't know. I mean, I think it's difficult right now. But what's before us is, do we have the authority to adopt 329? And I believe I'm hearing from both of you that you agree we do not have that authority right now, or that it would create an issue?
Yeah, I mean, if there's somebody else out there who thinks that we do, I'd love to hear them, but it's-
Would they do the work pro bono?
Would they do the work pro bono? Yeah, I don't know. It seems to me like, I mean, we were on that charter review committee together, so I'd looked this over, and, I mean, it's kind of explicit, so.
So I'll take a motion to recommend that the city council does not adopt Chapter 329.
Uh, yes, I'm, oh, second, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Wiss says aye. So those are the two items on our plate I have, and the next meeting will be dependent on, well, we will have the $255,000 CPA transfer. Now, that's just a formality, because the motion that we do on September 7th at the public hearing includes that, but we have to do a formal transfer of that fund. Yes, Michael?
Just to reiterate that, that money needs to be in a spending account before we can award a contract, so I'm-
We know that, it's going to happen, that'll happen. I have to talk to Hadal further about that, but once it's in the reserved account?
It still requires city council authority, right?
Let's go over this again, Hadal. There's $1.2 million, $1.25 million after the transfer we get in the Old Town Hall reserved account. That's what's going to be in there. Does the city council have to approve moving that to construction, or can that be an intradepartment? And we're, and my point is that the city council is authorizing the financing with the motion that's before us, so when construction is ready, why can't we just, you, move it into that account?
So there is a, two, two transfers are going to city council tomorrow for next week. One is intradepartmental transfer, which is from whatever this retained city matches to construction project, which will make that money available-
Oh, wait, whoa, 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 I didn't see that. I don't think that's going to happen. Or did you see it?
It's going to happen tomorrow. It's going to be in the package tomorrow.
The package is next Thursday, by the way, but okay. Yes.
So that appropriation-
If that's true, then you're right, then it's done.
And then second is going to city council is supplemental appropriation, which needs to be transferred from reserve to this construction project account. And once the vote is in, that money will be available in the same line that we can draw down from.
Okay. Not, that is, okay, but that's not what I've been given by Jamie, so there's a little, I have a question there. So she sent me documents that didn't say that, so I want her to, when she gets back, she has to talk to Burns, and she has to talk to you to make sure those documents are properly put into the city council packet for next week, because I think the documents that she gave me are not the same as what you just said.
Oh.
So we need to look at it.
Okay, I'll, I'll touch base with her tomorrow.
Well, she's not here. She's on vacation until Monday.
Well, either way, we'll probably be meeting on the 14th.
Yes, we will be meeting on the 14th to conclude our meeting, I'm sorry. So, Hadal, I'll touch base with you on that, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Say a second.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Wiss says aye. Okay, thank you. Now stopping recording. Tom's already done the minutes because he's brilliant.